...in order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Personal appeals, part one. Anyone with a personal appeal, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
I'm Anthony Grohl, I live on 1502 South Penn Street in Mays. To all my elected officials here, I hope you all had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope you got a lot of presents. What I'd like to know is, for the last ten and thirteen years, how come my taxes been going up? We have three departments, and you know what I'm talking about. These three departments are costing us a fortune. Does anybody on this council look at anything that's going on in these departments? Do we eat all these vehicles? Why, we have a used car lot down here, compost pile, where the garage is down there. I drove around since Christmas and New Year, I've never seen so many vehicles. Just imagine, insurance, maintenance, boy, that's costing me as a tax burden awful lot of money. And we have vehicles all over the place. There are three people on this council, I'm sure, that look, supposed to look in all these departments. How many of you people really look, not only sitting down with, say, the head of the department, really look into when these people come to you and say, "Well, I need this, I need that"? You people ever question where this money's gonna come from? How many of you people really do that? And don't believe what the guy tells you, look into your own mind and say, "Wait a minute, do we need this"? That's the problem here. I don't think, none of you people really look into all the details, otherwise, my taxes wouldn't increase for ten to thirteen years every year. It's amazing what's going on here.
Which departments? Which departments?
I don't wanna mention all three of them, but they're...
Well, mention all three. Don't accuse them without mentioning them.
You know the three.
I don't know which three you're referring to.
You don't know the three?
I do not.
Okay. Public Works, Police Department, and the Mass Ambulance Court. They're the ones that are costing us a fortune, and I don't think anybody's really asking the questions. Yeah. So now you know, okay?
Absolutely.
Another thing is, can anybody, anybody in the council give me $5,000 toward my taxes and don't ask a question?
Sell that extra vehicle you got sitting up there. You got two vehicles sitting up there, that's costing you a fortune, sell one of them.
Who?
You, you got two vehicles sitting up there, sell one of them.
How many do you have?
Three.
Three? Don't tell me what I could do. I know what I could tell you, but I won't. As a neighbor, I'm not gonna tell you, I'm not gonna get into details. What was the other one I was gonna ask you? Oh, any council person that says they gave up too much time to neglect their family, my own opinion is, you took that job, you want to serve the people of this community, and if you don't like it, if you have too much time involved, resign. That's my answer. Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
John Dodges, 559 Meyer Street. Just as information for everybody here, even council and the public, and happy new year for everyone. The, I guess there was technical difficulties with the webcasting from the last council meeting, and just to let everybody know that I was recording it, like I record most everything here, and I do have the full view that you can see up on a site that hosts our videos, and that's www.epcat.us. And you can see its entirety there, and other meetings, committee meetings and whatnot. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Samuel Seem, 654 Ridge Street. Bear with me, I'm not a really good public speaker. Listening to the residents is not happening. I just wanna say that we've complained, I know there's a couple neighbors in my neighborhood, I'm speaking on myself, not for them, but complained as far as the conditions of the alley is 600 block behind Ridge and between Ridge and Walnut. The condition of the alley is so bad that you can't drive down out of Safe Street, you have to drive it like five miles an hour. It's ridiculous, it needs to be fixed. This is all, everything with the truck parking as well. Safety of the residents, not happening. Mr. Brown, when you knocked on my door, when you were running for a thing, and I, the one thing I said was the speeding on Ridge Street. Twenty-five mile an hour speed limit in the borough is on resident streets? It still happens, forty miles an hour. I'm not kidding you, it is ridiculous. I mean, lines parked directly across the street, and it kills me. Way too fast. I see it all the time, and I can't let my daughter cross the street. My daughter's 12 years old, I will not let her cross that street by herself. I walk out there and cross her. I think when my daughter's 12 years old, she should be able to walk across the street by herself. All right? So I'm not mad at you, I'm just saying that that's a really, a big concern, especially with there being a park directly across the street. The whole thing with permits and with for trucks, you said it wasn't possible, but if I'm correct, around the high school, you need a permit to park if you're a resident. Okay? You can't do a permit for the trucks, but you can do a permit for residents. Residents, whether or not they're truckers or not, we should be able to have a permit to park our truck, whether or not it's my truck or my company's truck. I can't come and park my truck now on the street, my, because it's not a CDL truck, it's over the twenty-two and a half feet, or whatever it was that was in the last ordinance. I can't park it, because I have a thirty-foot vehicle. It's a straight job, but I can't park it there. I can't stop at my house for any reason whatsoever, because I'm afraid I'm gonna come out and get a, have a ticket on my car, or on my truck. I stop by there pretty often. I'm in the area, I stop at my house, whether it's on my lunch break or just to use the bathroom, because when you're a trucker, finding a bathroom sometimes is hard to find a bathroom. All right? So, hold on. And I always find, I found it funny through the whole, the whole situation with the truck parking, that the reasons have always changed. One was the conditions of the street, that was the first reason when it first came up, which I brought up those reasons why it's not true, because trucks aren't destroying the streets. And now it's complaints of the residents, which goes back to the same thing, of complaining on the resident, and I complained about the speeding and nothing was done. And apparently, you guys don't listen to residents, so it really doesn't matter what we say anymore, so...
Mr. Leydenberg?
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Samuel Seem.
Samuel, with regard to the alley improvement, you said between this 600 block between Ridge and Walnut?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Public Works Chairman, I will bring it up with my Public Works Director, and I'll, Shane, I'm sure will, I'll let the Public Works Director know, to see if there's any, anything that needs to be done right away, because it's a hazard.
Well, my thing is, I'm not, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but I know my neighbor who has said he has complained to the street department, or whoever he has complained to, I don't know, but numerous times, they've come and they filled in a couple potholes, but it makes it worse, because what's happening is they, it's damming up, it dams up the alley, and I'm telling you, it's a skating rink in the winter.
All right. I will bring it up at my next committee meeting. Second, with regard to speeding, council really has no control over that, it's a police issue, and the mayor is in charge of the police department, so that should be more directed at the mayor than the council.
Okay, I apologize, because I know that...
No, just inform me, I figured you'd know. As far as the permit parking, I, there were some on council that supported that.
I know there was.
I think it's more or less, there wasn't support, a majority support to support that.
I totally understand that.
And as far as the reasons changing, I don't think they changed, it's just different council members brought up different reasons. I don't think...
Well, I know, I know the first, the first meeting that I came to, when we first heard about it, it was said that the reason was because the curbs on Ridge Street and that the, the street was deteriorating?
I was the one that said that.
Okay, yeah. So I went out and I looked at that, and I brought up that, I brought up that the trucks, the truckers, if a, if a trucker's gonna hit a curb, I don't wanna pay $500 to replace a tire because it hit a curb, okay?
Right.
And then the next meeting, it was the reason you're doing it, your, the exact words, if I'm correct, I remember 100%, was because of complaints.
And that was a different council member, I said that, because that, that wasn't me that...
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it's always different now, I don't, yeah, this is all moved me the whole...
But I just wanted to let you know about the alley, that will be addressed, and that the speeding should be addressed to the mayor.
As far as...
Police issues should be addressed to the mayor.
Okay. All right. But as far as the alley, I just know that when I drive down the street, I, when I pull out my garage, I can't put my seatbelt on until I get on Seventh Street, because I'm gonna choke myself driving down the alley. Okay? And it, I know that, I don't know what the street is, but there's a one that goes at the end, directly across from the fire department, that goes from Ridge to Walnut.
Okay.
That section was fixed. Completely ripped up and completely repaved, but the rest of the alley was completely...
A lot of the alleys were done recently?
Right.
And that could be put on the list for...
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Otto Slows, 121 East Stone Street. In viewing the minutes of September 17th, I note that my appeal has been so condensed that it actually is unrecognizable as to what I actually said. Also, the gentleman in front of me, his appeal was condensed, and I haven't looked at the others, but quite frankly, if the minutes don't reflect the actual placement, what are they gonna... Thank you.
Oh, second? If you could check on that, Mr. Carter?
I'll, legally, you capture...
Just a brief?
Yeah, legally, you capture what, legally you need to put on there.
Okay. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Jonathan Robertson, 165 Spruce Street. So, Mr. Leydenberg, at the last meeting, you had stated that the trucks were the problem for the condition of Keystone Street?
I don't think that was the last meeting.
Well, it was one of them, it was, you reported the paper saying that.
If it says, if the paper said, I guess it's true.
Okay. So where do you get your information? Because the section from Chestnut Street going over to, or is that Main Street going over to Ridge, has been paved recently, that's fine. The other section that's been torn up by the Amaze Road Crew, and patched and patched and patched, is the one that's the problem. If you go on the other side of Harrison Street, Keystone is fine again, not a mark on it. Curb next to where I parked the truck, not a mark on it. Curb across the street from where I parked the truck, probably destroyed, doesn't even exist. And yet trucks are blamed for it. We have problems funding the fire department, but yet we have no problem spending thousands of dollars to keep borough residents from coming home from work. I'd like to know why that is. Taxes were raised as far as going to the compost heap, because we don't have the money. Taxes were raised to the fire department, because we don't have the money. At the very least, we were told that it was gonna cost $2,000 just in signs. That's not including the cost to actually get anything put up. So where exactly is all that money suddenly coming from?
I don't really know what your question is, I'm sorry. Are you addressing it to me?
I'm addressing it to pretty much anybody in the council. Exactly how are we coming up with the money? Since we can't have the money to fund basic things, like the fire department, how can we have no problem blowing thousands of dollars on keeping borough residents from coming home from work?
I believe in the safety of our residents, and I believe trucks make, in, trucks do not ensure the safety of our residents.
Really? So how is that?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson, if you don't agree with my belief.
Well, no, I...
The residents that I've spoken to feel trucks are unsafe.
Okay, so according to the residents, now these are the numbers from him.
No, no.
Okay? You have, no, you have eleven people, eleven, that send in notes. Eleven, over eleven years. And that's what we're legislating for.
Mr. Robertson, I'm a representative of the people. The people that I've spoken to do not feel trucks are safe.
So how many people is that?
It's, I, more than twenty. I talked to two retired truck drivers in the last two months that feel absolutely tractor-trailer should not be parked on borough streets, it's a safety issue. It's what they did for a living. I'm, I'm sorry it personally affects you, it's a difficult decision to make when you personally affect someone. If you were here, and nice and polite, it might be a little different. If you're the guy who parks down the bottom of the cemetery, I feel really bad for him, because it's gonna change his livelihood.
It's gonna change his livelihood.
The way, the way you speak to me, though, makes me feel angry towards you, and I'm sorry I feel that way, I don't want to, because I don't want someone affecting my livelihood, and I know you don't want someone affecting yours, but you have never been nice or polite to me. And I'm sorry, but I don't, I feel, I feel the safety of the residents is paramount to this situation, I do. And I'm sorry, I feel, I'm sorry that it's gonna affect you personally, but I think a tractor-trailer is dangerous, and if a person, if a child was killed at the corner of Keystone and Ridge, because your truck is parked there, I would have a problem.
But if you talk to the cemetery, the cemetery would rather get rid of the bus stop than the truck, because the truck doesn't cause any damage there, but the kids that are waiting for the bus do.
I don't have control over that bus stop, I apologize that I don't.
But yet, when I was parked over on the corner of Makonji Avenue and Walnut, the Amaze Police Department forced me to park in front of a bus stop. Forced. That's where I was told I had to park. The bus company called the Amaze Police Department and complained, and the police department told them to go bounce in, that that's where I was supposed to park. So you're saying if I just move my truck back some, then it'll be fine?
I don't think tractor-trailers should be parked on streets in the borough of Amaze. I see them as a safety hazard.
If I have a queue ban, then I'm fine, right?
Mr. Robertson, I don't think we'll ever get anywhere with you continually asking me questions, and me continually answering with the same answer. Unfortunately, you're personally affected by this, and I'm really sorry you are.
Well, I'm personally affected by the fact that, you know, we're legislating off of hearsay.
So the residents that complain to me, and me, and me advocating for them is hearsay?
So the residents that come in here and tell you against the ban, you had more against the ban than for the ban?
Absolutely not.
But yet, here we are.
Oh, here, in this public forum, yes, I agree.
Mr. Robertson, your five minutes are up. Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Glenn Gregory, 129 Harrison Street. I just wanna read what I, in the, the Morning Fall from Monday, October 15th. Earl Staff has received ten letters or emails about the trucks for recreational vehicles since 2003, according to documents obtained by the Morning Fall through the Right to Know request. All but two of these complaints were received between January 2000, or June of 2010 to July of 2012. So over ten years, we had ten complaints. One complaint a year, that doesn't sound too, like, heavy duty to me. And added those, in the last two years, eight of those complaints were made. So for the first eight years, two complaints. The last two years, eight complaints. And it just so happened, coincidentally, that's when John started parking his truck at the upper end of the cemetery, and there was somebody not happy with him parking there. So you got the same person, basically, in the last two years, doing all the bitching and moaning. It just, it just doesn't seem right. There's no reason John can't park, maybe I'm talking out of school, or, I don't think there's no reason he can't park on the bottom side, on First Street, behind where I park. I talked to my neighbor behind me, he said, "They'd have no problem with another truck parked there." And that would solve everything. Everybody would be happy. That's all I've said. Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Ms. Michelle Robertson, 155 Spruce Street, and I'm also here speaking of the truck ban. I understand it's a touchy issue. I, I get that. To say it affects my family is an understatement, and then just my husband personally attached in the public forum is not okay. I don't like being here, I have a two-year-old home that I wanna be with. I don't like that I have to come out at night and be away from my baby, but this is the welfare of my family. My husband is just coming home from work, that's all he's doing. I've looked around, I don't see the damage on the street. Every single resident I've talked to is against this ban. I've worked in Mass, I know a lot of people in Mass, I went to school here, it's not like, yeah, I work here, I, I'm in the community, I work at the daycare, I know a lot of people in the community. No one I know supports this ban. It does seem like that there's a vocal minority that is being listened to, and I understand that you're not hearing the majority. Maybe that's it, I don't know. But it's very frustrating as a resident, whose life is being so drastically affected, and that a vocal minority is being listened to instead of the, the majority of people that, that I'm talking to. And I don't have a question, I just wanted to speak my piece.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes? If I could, I mean, as we know, we've spoke all upon this issue, and I thought it was a very cordial conversation. To say that the minority, and I think this is, this is a part, just maybe to step back a little bit, and just analyze it maybe, I'm completely wrong on it, but this is how I look at it, is that most neighbors, you don't wanna start a fight with your neighbor. So it's pretty seldom that you're going to really put up a fight on something like that. And you might just, if you asked your neighbor, you'd probably say, "Ah, is it okay? Do you mind us parking there?". And they're probably not gonna say, "No, it's the worst thing ever, get out of my face". They're probably gonna try and give you some Walter Down answer that says, "No, you know what, it really isn't a big issue, or they'll side with you, it's just the way it is". But the reality is, I mean, we live in almost the exact same neighborhood of people, and I would call that a hotbed for where this issue exists. And it doesn't come from me, it came from, a year ago, helping out some of the candidates that were running for office, knocking on doors, and almost on every door that I knock, including on neighbors that are just right next to you, would say that this was an issue.
You told me it was, out of 150 people, 20 people complained, that's what you told me.
Sure, those were the people that, that complained, but if you asked them, if you asked them...
That's the minority, that's a pretty significant minority.
That complaint, that they, that they, I think that's a huge significant, that they brought that as the issue, like, of all the issues that could possibly be, there's millions of them, and they, and 20 of the 150 that I mentioned list the exact same one, they actually went out of their way to say, "Yeah, I think this is it". I didn't ask them, "Do you think that parking is an issue"? What I'm trying to say is that, in a very polite way, saying that, "I think that it might sound like a minority when you speak to them, because how many people want to have a fight with their neighbor"? But when you speak to it as someone where people are more than comfortable to complain to a borough council member, they pretty readily do it. And, and I think that's a pretty accurate, that's the pulse that I've gotten, and from what I've heard, others in this room have gotten that same pulse, when, when they get to ask it in a, more or less, an unbiased, or someone that they feel has authority, they can actually say, "Hey, go change this". But that's where that, that comes from. I think that there's also a little bit of an intimidation factor from some people when they might speak to you, they, once they see that the guard goes up, because it is your livelihood, as you've stated, they don't want to belittle that, or they don't want to get into a fight with you. And from an intimidation factor, I mean, your husband's a more or less an intimidating person, I don't think there's anyone in this room that would disagree with that. A big guy, most people don't wanna be in a argument with a big guy like that. So I, I think that that's where you're gonna find why, when you ask these questions, that you may be getting a different answer than what I think other members on council are getting.
But my husband hasn't, he's never had an argument with anyone.
I didn't say that at all.
But he discusses it very, you know, he doesn't lose his temper, he discusses it very civil manner.
I used your husband as the example, because I'm speaking to you, so, I mean, I could say that for, do you wanna be in a big, in an argument with a 400-pound big stocky guy, or do you wanna be in an argument with a redhead 125-pounder?
I've been in an argument with him.
I was trying to give a comparison, most people don't wanna, I think everyone knew where I was coming, and it wasn't supposed to be, literally, it was supposed to be bigger than south.
I assume my five minutes are up, but how was you about to tell me? Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Councilor Councilwoman, very now, 444 North Thursday.
What's your last name, sir?
Neville.
Thank you.
Mr. Fink, just to clarify, I'd rather be in the argument with the big guy, because he usually slower.
There you go, that's true.
The small guy, okay. So never underestimate him. The topic of the trucking ban. I'm not a trucker, I have many friends who are. I'm understanding, I've come to a couple of meetings now, here, both sides. Ten years, ten complaints, is that what I'm understanding, roughly?
Those were written complaints.
Formal.
Written, written complaints.
On the Right to Know Act, I heard in the paper that they were able to get that information, is that something that any public citizen can fill out for?
As long as you fill out the form for Right to Know.
Okay. Yeah, I've just, just, I'm just interested in seeing kind of what, what kind of information that any individual gave, not who it was, just what they put in. I've never seen an issue with any of the trucks in the area. I live right at the corner of Harrison and their furniture store behind us, trucks pull around there all the time after they make deliveries. Never a problem. And that road is actually, they're not even supposed to be on it, but because they're making a local delivery, they're allowed. These gentlemen here, every, one of them that has come up and spoke, I see the trucks where they are. I've never had an issue with them coming down the road, they're always courteous. If you're trying to come down the same road the opposite direction, they'll actually pull off to the side and allow you to pass. I really just, I think that we have actually listened to a minority of people in the community. Unfortunately, they seem to have the largest voice, which is... which is quite unfortunate. Really would like everybody on the council to not disband the possibility of a parking ban, but to reconsider it and give it a possible, another look, second look, third look even. These, these gentlemen are just trying to come home. Most of them don't have anywhere else to park. And it's, it's really going to affect them. I see many other commercial vehicles that park in the borough. And some park in personal driveways. Most park on public streets. If you're going to make it a, a parking ban on a large vehicle, commercial, go across the board. And that's me speaking as a union electrician. So, you know, if you're going to be fair, be fair. Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal? Hearing none? Community Minute? Any member of council have an item that they'd like to bring forward for Community Minute? No? Special presentations? We have none this evening. We have two sets of minutes and reminders. We begin with December 17th minutes first. Is there a motion to dispense with the formal reading of those minutes? Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. And for the record, Dr. Medell was not with us this evening. Additions or corrections? Any member of council have any additions or corrections? Hearing none? Motion to adopt is drafted? Motion by Mr. Shubson, second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. Also on your binder are the minutes from the December 24th meeting. Is there a motion to dispense with the formal reading of those minutes as well? Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Raydenberg. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. Additions or corrections? Hearing none? Motion to adopt is drafted. Motion by Mr. Raydenberg. Second by Mr. Holtzaper. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. Decisions on bits? We have no bits this evening, Mr. Pappy? Communications? First letter in your binder comes from Shelley Steiner. It is with deep sadness that I tender my resignation from the EMAAS Borough Parks and Recreation Commission. I have other commitments that need my attention and I cannot devote the time necessary to continue with this commission. I would like to continue my involvement with the special entertainment however. Is there a motion to accept her resignation? Motion by Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtzaper. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. With our resigning from Parks and Rec, Mr. Barrett, there's no, no question about her being able to sit on the special entertainment commission.
We actually, in the first ordinance, we actually eliminated the requirement.
That's correct. Okay. If we could send her a thank you letter for serving in the commission?
Yeah, she's been on a number, for a number of years and been a consistent contributor in every room, so. She would adjust.
We don't have, no one has submitted their names that would be willing to serve on Parks and Rec? Just out of the blue? Because we currently don't have her.
So, we, we have two vacancies now.
Okay.
And we, prior to changing the ordinance to permit those are-
No president?
Right, exactly. We had had three people over that time that were able to, or were unable to. We did reach out to them. I had seen some emails that Kathy had sent to them. But actually, in the last three or four weeks, I haven't heard anything.
No response.
I follow.
And there's at least one or two that moved out of the area or aren't interested.
Right, yeah, one was, yeah, I think it might be down just a-
Just the one?
Matthew.
Matthew.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you. The next letter comes from Steven Zacco. As I informed Mr. Dinkle Walker at our last meeting, I'm moving my primary residence from EMAAS to Lower McCunchie Township on March of 2013. I will continue to own my current property on North Street in the borough. It will not be my primary residence. I would willingly continue to serve in my present capacity if it's permitted. Please advise whether I may serve another term or whether I must step down the line of the residency requirements of this position. Mr. Pappy, do you know, I believe with planning, we-
Can I forward an email to you late this afternoon with a response from Mr. Dinkle Walker? Because it's not his primary residence, the municipal, municipality plan code stays that he will not be able to serve.
Not permitted to serve. Okay. At this point, then, would-
Guess we need an official resignation.
Yeah, if you could contact him, I would feel better having an official letter of resignation from him before we take any kind of action. Maybe he can fill the seats on March. All right. Other communications? Any member of council have an item to bring forward under communications? I know on your desk this evening, there were some. Yeah, one from the school district, Ryan Old. He was chairman, early co-adviser of the class of 2013, class of 2013 of EMAAS High School. Would like to request permission to use pavilions, park and bathroom facilities in EMAAS Community Park on Friday, May 24th, 2013, between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM for the senior class picnic. Mr. Barrett, I will forward that to your committee. Also, there was a board and commission information sheet from Alinda Rose. She is interested in serving on the library board. I will forward that to general administration. Also on your desk this evening are three letters that Chief Faust sent out. One to Citizens Fire Company Number One. They donated $250 to the K9 program. The second goes to the Mercantile Fund. They donated $3,000 to the police department. And Chief Faust sent thank you letters to those. And also to Citizens Fire Company Number Two. The letter of thank you to Number Two. They provided the Christmas dinner for the volunteer crossing guards back in December, free of charge, to the borough. So we do in fact send thank you letters out for that. Mr. Pappy, do you have anything under communication? We got it all. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I just received this tonight here from the Concerned Penn Taxpayers Association. The topic is, they're going to have three speakers. The first will be Mr. Bob Kaufman, distinguished EMAAS citizen and veteran who received a Bronze Star and two Purple Hearts for his service to our country during World War II. In recent years, he has made numerous voyages over to Normandy, area of France, where he fought. And on his last visit, he was honored and participated in the Orange of the Colors ceremony over the cemetery of his fallen brothers. He has awarded the flag as a memento and will have the honor of displaying that flag at our meeting. Mr. Kaufman will also show a short video and speak some about his military service. I must say, I've heard Bob Kaufman already and it's worthwhile listening to him. He's really good. And then the next two guest speakers would be Lehigh County Commissioners Scott Ott and Michael Schwer. Their topic will be about frozen cunts of referendum versus representative voting. In other words, should we as taxpayers have a direct vote on a measure? Or should we, as it is now, allow our duly-elected representative to cast a vote on our behalf? There would be time after the presentations for the public to meet and talk with all the presenters. So please come, join us to salute and meet those who that served and those that now serve us. The date will be Tuesday, January 15th, 2013. Location, Fire Company Number One, Corner 6th and Broad Street, EMAAS. The time, 7:30 PM, and goes to 9:30. The cost is free and open to the public. And likely freshmen will be available. If anybody has, anybody has a question, please call 610-965-3556. Sponsored by Decepta, Concerned Penn Taxpayers Association. Progress.
Thank you. Borough engineers report? We have no report this evening. Solicitors report? Attorney Dinkle Walker? Good evening!
How are you today?
I'm fine. And yourself?
Good. I, I have something specific to report. I don't have a written report with me or am I going to answer any questions that they would like to have? Or if I can't answer them, we have the information for you.
Very good. Thank you. Unfinished business, part one. And the binder this evening is ordinance 1087. This is scheduled for second reading. This is the ordinance dealing with the tractor-trailers, motorhomes, trucks with truck campers, buses, parking on borough streets. Has this been properly advertised, Mr. Barrett? So this is our final reading of this. Is there a motion to read ordinance 1087 in short title? Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes. This is ordinance 1087. An ordinance of the borough of EMAAS, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending the Code of Ordinances, Section 401A of Chapter 15, to include regulations prohibiting the parking on any public street or any public area of commercial motor vehicle, truck tractor, trailer, bus, motorhome, and truck with truck camper, and providing penalties for the violation thereof. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1087 as read? Motion by Mr. Holtzaper? Second by Mr. Barrett? Discussion? Mr. Raydenberg?
Just one thing I want to say is that, one thing this council cannot be accused of is not debating the issue. This has been on the agenda for two, if not three years, or if not longer than that. I've seen it come to council floor or it's got sent back to committee more than once, two or three times. I've seen where the issue where there actually was mill parking permitted on the library, down by the library, at the cemetery. So this council has tried different things. And I don't think anyone took this slightly. I, I just wanted to say that. I don't think anyone took this slightly. This has been on the agenda for several years and has come before council and back to the committee a lot of times over the years. And it's unfortunate where it's going, but I, I think that's the wish of the council and the wish of the people. So I know there's some that I would disagree with that.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Raydenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Holtzaper?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Shubson?
No.
Mrs. Gilbert votes aye. We have five ayes. Mr. Shubson is opposed. Ordinance 1087 passes. New business? We have nothing on the agenda on the new business this evening. Unfinished business, part two? We have nothing? Items not on the agenda, that leads to rule nine. Any member of council have an item that they'd like to push to the board? Hearing none? Mayor's report? Mr. Mayor? Nothing?
No problem.
Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Raydenberg?
Yes, Public Works met here on January, January 3rd. And there's nothing to take action on. You have the memorandum with the items that were discussed. Just one thing I want to point out that Mr. Nanamaker made a public appeal at last meeting with regard to painting parking lines from South, on South Fourth Street from the triangle back to Broad Street. And it was discussed at our committee. And the next time they paint lines somewhere else in the borough, they will add those lines on South Fourth Street. So that was addressed, which was brought forward by Mr. Nanamaker. Nobody has any questions? Progress.
Thank you. Con sanitation? The conservations, Mr. Shubson?
Thank you. We have one official item based on a recommendation from the Board of Health, 3O vote. We would like to reappoint Dr. David Bermanster to the Board of Health. Term expires 1/1/2018. And I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtzaper? Discussion? Mr. Raydenberg?
How many vacancies are on that board? Ever since I've been on council, I don't think we've ever had a full Board of Health.
No, it's full.
It's full. It is full.
Yeah, it's, and everybody's there. He's the only one.
He needs help. He's actually this doctor, right? He's not like a normal member.
Right, he's a doctor.
That's his internship, I think, for several years. We had trouble getting people on that.
We're going to eventually-
Did we just have a resignation just, well, so?
Yes, we did. We did.
That'll be one of them. That'll be our next meeting. We'll have to talk about that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have six eyes.
And our next meeting is scheduled for January 28th at 5:00 PM. Progress.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Barrett?
We will be meeting tomorrow here in Council Chambers at 3:30. Report progress.
Thank you. Public Safety? We have four items for official action this evening. The first one is, the committee did meet at 6:30 prior to council meeting this evening and we interviewed Kathy Heaney for the vacancy in the Civil Service Commission. The committee is recommending by 3O vote to appoint her to fill the unexpired term of May 1st. of May 12th, and that term is set to expire January 1 of 2014. Kathy's excited about this opportunity. She has done profile testing and criminal background checks on individuals, so she is familiar with some of the parts of civil service. So the committee is recommending that we appoint her to fill the unexpired term. Is there a motion from somebody?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? Mr. Leidenberg.
I will be voting against this because Kathy Heaney was voted to put on the Special Entertaining Committee. I think she served like one week or two weeks and resigned. Am I not mistaken on that?
How long she was on?
So I will not be supporting this for those reasons.
Any further discussion?
And that was within last six months.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have five ayes. Those opposed? Mr. Leidenberg, your votes. In your binder, there are three applications for the ambulance corps. All members of council, review Mr. Pepe's memo. Is there a number? Public Safety?
Yes. Yes, I saw it.
Yes, okay. He did conduct interviews with Mr. Naademaker for part-time paramedics and part-time EMT. He is recommending the appointment of three individuals. The first one is Denise Schenk as a part-time EMT. Do you want to tell us a little bit about her, Mr. Pepe, or not?
I mean, yeah, I can. Ms. Schenk is volunteering at the ambulance corps for several months. She's fresh to the business. She's very excited. She seems very dedicated to what she's doing. I was very impressed with the responses she gave. It's very evident that she's well-trained in the field. And I would say the same about Mr. Gibbons as far as the part-time EMT. Mr. Gibbons has also been volunteering within the department for several months. Now, they'll be doing per diem, part-time, so they'll be filling some open shifts here and there is essentially what they'll be doing.
Okay. Let's do the EMTs first. Since we do have the recommendation for Denise Schenk and Kyle Gibbons, we'll combine them as one motion because they are the EMTs. We'll keep them separate from the paramedic. Is there a motion to appoint them as part-time EMTs? Motion by Mr. Barrett. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? Mr. Leidenberg.
Yes, in your interview notes here, you mentioned for several of the candidates that they would be interested in fire training.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great idea. Is it the direction that this council is going to go that if you're in the ambulance corps, you will be trained in firefighting also so that we have more in the borough?
I can't say that for sure, but that's discussions, those are discussions that I've had with council members, and we haven't gone in any direction yet, but that's something that I personally will be pushing. I believe that we should be cross-trained in both departments. I think it's futile not to be cross-trained in both departments. It's inefficient. It just, there's no sense whatsoever to, an ambulance call coming and the firemen sit there while the ambulance enters it, or vice versa, you know, a fire call comes in and the ambulance sits there. Those are two departments that should work hand in hand, and I think that's a direction that I will personally push for. Obviously, it's whatever your council wishes, but I've made it, I think, in the past several months, very verbal to council, and I have no problem saying that on the record, but that's something that I would personally push towards.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes. Also, Brian Nelson as a part-time paramedic. Do you want to tell us about him, Mr. Pepe?
Absolutely. Mr. Nelson has been a paramedic for many years, and was very highly recommended from you, Mr. Naademaker. He works in administration at Lehigh Valley Health Systems. He actually serves on the ambulance council in an advisory role, so we actually have a working relationship with the showman already. Mr. Nelson is, I believe, would provide an immediate asset to the department with his knowledge, abilities, and skills, and I think could help that department in a lot of different areas, and help ensure that things are being ran the way that they need to be, not that they aren't already. However, Mr. Nelson has a level of expertise that's outside of the normal paramedic. Again, he's a gentleman who certainly doesn't need to be a paramedic. He wants to be a paramedic. This is something that he wants to put in a couple of shifts in a week, and, you know, I would be very satisfied with hiring him, so I would recommend that you appoint him as well. And again, this would be another per diem, part-time, fulfilling open shifts.
Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Nelson then as a part-time paramedic? Motion by Mr. Barrett. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes. I believe that's all that, no, actually, we do have a reappointment of Vince Trainbuche to the Civil Service Commission. I know Mr. Trainbuche doesn't want to step down from that, but he is willing to serve until we find another individual to take his place. So we need to reappoint him to a term that would expire January 1 of 2019. Motion by Mr. Brown. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion?
I just want to let you know that I spoke with Mr. Trainbuche several occasions, and once we do find a replacement for him, he would be willing to step into the alternate role.
Very good.
That would be, that's a position that's less demanding.
Correct.
So he would be happy to fill in that role once we find a replacement for him.
Okay. That's good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes. That covers everything under Public Safety. Our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, January 10th at 3:00 p.m. We'll report progress. General Administration, who's going to be giving that report this evening in the absence of Dr. Waddell? Mr. Barrett, would you like to give us that report?
Thank you. Well, we have appointments.
There's a whole list of reappointments and the resolution.
I'll start with the appointments. They're listed in your agenda. I'll read them. I can do them as a group, or would you like them done individually?
Do them individually, because they're all individual boards.
Okay. So the first reappointment is Todd Loggins-Flager, Building Board of Appeals, with a term expiring 1/1/2018. Place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leidenberg. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Richard Gerhart, General Authority, term expiring 1/1/2018. Place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Krista Pegmaner, Library Board, term expiring 1/1/2016. I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor? Six ayes.
Ziad Munson, Library Board, term expiring 1/1/2016. I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leidenberg. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Robert Bamer, M.A.S. Arts Commission, term expiring 2/7/2016.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor? Six ayes.
Angela Badley, M.A.S. Arts Commission, term expiring 2/7/2016.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Terry Stewart-McMannan, M.A.S. Arts Commission, term expiring 2/7/2016.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shupstah. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Reds Bailey, Shade Tree Commission, term expiring 1/1/2018.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leidenberg. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
John Stover, Vacancy Board, term expiring 1/1/2014.
Is there a second? Mr. Haltsefer. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
Ronald Gilbert, Zoning Hearing Board, alternate, term expiring 1/1/2016.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leidenberg. All those in favor? We have five ayes. Those opposed? One abstaining. Mrs. Gilbert is abstaining.
Make sure you write that down. You know him?
I think I know that guy, so, yeah, all right.
Susan Schmidt, Zoning Hearing Board, term expiring 1/1/2016.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shupstah. That puts Mrs. Schmidt into the permanent position. It moves her from the alternate's position onto the regular seated position, so we do have the opening now for alternate. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
All right, that covers all of the boards and commissions, and the next is Resolution 2013-1. Do I need to go through?
If you agree them, please, yes.
As a whole?
As a whole.
Okay.
And then we'll do it as a motion.
Ambulance Chief, Mike Naademaker, Animal Control Officer, Richard Hans, Borough Manager[1010.12][1010.12]/ Secretary, Shane Pepe, Borough Solicitor, Dimic and Dinkelacher, Borough Treasurer, Christine Snyder, our CPA, Franz Anderson, Basil and Company, Civil Service Commission Solicitor, Fonzo Nationali, Emergency Management Coordinator, Kevin Farnish, our Engineer, Handover Engineering, Fire Chief, Jim Rice, Fire Inspector, Kevin Farnish, Health Officer, Gary Ritter, Pension Consultant for Police Non-Uniform, Conrad Segal, Police Chief, David Faust, Public Works Director, Jeffrey Kepflapper, Assistant Public Works Director, John Shaw, Public Works Inspector, Co-Enforcement Officer, Joe Farnsworth, Sewage Enforcement Officer, Jacoby Schrein, Schrein, and Jeffrey Huff, Zoning Hearing Force Director, Ronald Corpory.
Will you place that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Resolution 2013-1. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Leidenberg. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
I don't believe there's anything else to report. I will report progress.
Thank you. I believe we have a meeting Wednesday?
Yes.
Wednesday at 9:00.
Wednesday at 9:00.
Okay. Thank you. Budget, Mr. Haltsefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert. First item on my agenda is the bill list. I will read the resolution. Resolution 2013-2, resolved by Borough Council to authorize payment of the January 7, 2013 bill list as follows. Bill list, $189,808.25, payroll number 26, $105,534.60, payroll taxes, $33,030.26, total of $328,373.11 on the 7th of January 2013. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shupstah. Discussion? All those in favor? We have six ayes.
The only other thing we discussed this evening at our meeting was the compost fee added to the refuse assessment. We had a, and I'm not sure if everyone's on this or not, but we had a question from a resident, Dale Washburn, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Avenue, questioning whether it was intended that multi-units would pay multiple fees. That he has a, I believe it's a three-unit apartment that he also lives in, so he keeps one of the units, rents two of the others out, does all of the grass work, landscaping, all of that himself. So his other two residents do not need to use compost, but they do need to put out refuse. So his question was, does the other, the other two $6 fees also go along with it? So we're going to refer that to Health and Sanitation to discuss further. I believe that's all I have this evening. Progress.
Thank you. Major Relations Planning and Development, Mr. Brown.
Nothing for official actions, but I just want to just give everybody a quick update that Mr. Pepe is going to be filling out the Streetscape Amenities Grant. He'll just be filling out the, just the normal information that is needed, but at our next CRD meeting, which is January 24, year 415, here in Council Chambers, we'll be discussing a project that's been on either Downtown Master Plan, or there's also with the Streetscape Amenities Grant, they've added security cameras. We can discuss that as well, but if you guys have any, or ladies have any ideas, I'll reach out to the Main Street Partners to see if they are working, kind of any ideas that we can partner together with, on a project. So Terry Madison will be also coming to our CRD meeting as well, if she has any ideas, but hopefully by, in the first meeting of February, per council, hopefully we'll have a project that will get approved, the grants for up to $15,000, and it's a 50% match. With that, nothing else to report, I'll report progress.
Thank you. Junior Council Members, your vote? Mr. Hudson.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to report that Student Government is hosting the annual Miller Keystone Blood Drive, and it's on January 15th. And also midterm exams were moved back two days, so now they're going to be on the 18th, 23rd, and 22nd of January. Progress.
Thank you. Which brings us to Personal Appeals, Part Two. Anyone with a personal appeal, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address on the record, and you have five minutes.
American Grover, 1302 shot tank treaty, man. Budget and finance, Brian, I hope so. Every year that I attend this meeting, you tell me, as a taxpayer, that you cut the budget down to the bone, or down to the, down to the department. Now, if you cut every department, or what you're telling me, that taxpayer, how come our taxes and everything went up, and everything else?
Were you here at the last meeting? Did you see how far I cut?
When was the last meeting?
Last one in December, when the whole fire department was here, because we cut their budget so hard.
Oh, yes, I am.
So you can see how far we cut. We're beyond the bone. We're cutting into the bone now and taking the repercussions of it.
Okay, so that's what you're telling me. I don't believe it, but that's okay what you're telling me. Now, any borough employee that takes any vehicle home, day in and day out, whatever, does anybody know what it costs me as a taxpayer? All the gas, fuel, and maintenance costs? And if this vehicle breaks down, who's responsible for that? Is the borough responsible? That they take it home? You know that there's not a lot of cost. Look, if I made $25,000 or not, you can't tell me I can't afford my own vehicle. So evidently, somebody, to me, I'm only doing my own opinion. Somebody must be taking advantage of somebody.
Two, right? Two vehicles we're talking about, right? Or do you know?
I don't know if there's only two.
Well, you know. You know. You know. I know, you know, too, I think, but maybe I'm missing one. I think there's two. You know.
What it should really cost.
It's a good question. One of them goes pretty far. It's a valid question. That's a valid question that I will look into for you. I'll get an answer.
I mean, if you make 70-some thousand dollars, you can afford a car.
Well, they won't give me a car. I asked. They won't give me one. I asked for one.
No, but then they should afford to give you a car for nothing, too, then.
I wish, right? You have an actual.
I'll be honest with you. I'd be laughing to the bank every Friday. Thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
John Donches, 559 Minor. Just a question for Mr. Brown, as far as that matching grant. Is that a, you said 50% match. It's a $15,000 grant, so you need 7,500, or you have the $15,000?
No, I don't know if you understand grants, Mr. Donches, but let me just start here. One is, it's up to $15,000. So we have a project that is $4,000. We need to match two, you know, another $4,000, a total of $8,000. Or we can do it like this, we can have a $4,000 total project and do $2,000. Now, it's actually not cash money. Sometimes it's in-kind service. You know, if you want to volunteer your time, we can do that, you know, put it against there. Public Works has done that, in-kind service. So, you know, with the grant, that's working out pretty well, and that's how it kind of works. So it's not all cash, so that's good.
But the dollar amount has to match whatever you're asking for.
Correct.
Okay. So it's labor, donations, things of that nature. That's fine. So I wanted to find, I wasn't sure if it was like, if it was going to be $15,000, you had to match 7,500, or if you had a $15,000.
Well, if you have 100% match.
You're going to have $30,000 project. You have to have 100% match, not the 50%.
Yeah, they call 50/50, but, yeah.
That's what I wanted to clear up.
You have to match.
But it's the count, yeah.
Yep. Dollar-for-dollar match. Okay. And then the other one was, just with the trucking stuff, there was some mention as far as like parking space that was going to be thought about.
That was voted down. We brought that. It was voted down.
Okay. You know why it was?
Council members were objecting to it. It was a 1/6 vote, I believe, for that?
Four, three.
No. No, he's talking about providing the area for parking. I was the only one that voted in favor, and everybody else voted against it.
You know why it was voted down?
Because more people raised their hand against it than for it.
I realize what was their reasoning for raising their hand against it, that was.
No, I, my personal, I was not interested in providing a place, having police having to patrol it, the added liability of keeping someone's truck there, if something would happen to the truck. I just didn't, I didn't feel it was in the best interest of the borough to be in the parking lot business.
Okay. Then these parking spaces, you aren't going to go into a parking lot business for yourself, either?
I wouldn't vote for it, no.
Okay. I was wondering, I missed what the reasoning was for that, and I wondered, because I thought, well, at least it should be. It should be involved in.
Yeah, should have a videotape.
Your videotape should have that, and maybe I'll look at that then again and see. I just, I mean, you have. Two videos. No, I'm just saying. Well, sometime this one doesn't work. It gets edited, so I'll have to look. Oh, that's, that's what you're saying, I guess, whatever it is. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Those are 121, and I didn't want to come up here, but after I heard that explanation, I have to. I want you to clarify, Mr. Brown, Public Works, are they donating their time without pay?
No, with pay.
So it doesn't, and costs the taxpayers some money, so it's not really a volunteer. If they're being paid, it costs the taxpayer as much. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else with a personal appeal? Hearing none. Moving to Borough Managers' Report. Do you have anything for us this evening? Go ahead and your expense report, revenue and expense. Something in your expense report, revenue and expense?
100K. Any questions, I'm happy to ask.[1756.73]